I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon, Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. Yes, we have a quorum. Next item of business.
I move to excuse Mike Lennon.
Support.
Thank you. Councilman Lennon got stuck in the weather in Grand Rapids. He was not able to get out of town, and so consider that a unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Moving on to the agenda, are there any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda this evening?
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
With a friendly amendment, can we remove Presentation C?
No.
Yeah, we were notified by the Downtown Development Authority folks that they weren't going to be able to make it tonight, so we can strike Presentation C. Otherwise, moved by Pollocka and supported by Piana, any discussion, further discussion on the agenda? Cheryl Lennon, you want to call the roll, please?
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to presentations, our first presentation is a Police Department Citizen Award, and I believe Police Chief Collins is here to make that presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Let's give you a handheld, if you like.
We were happy that our recipient would be here tonight. He did indicate that he was, but he also may be a victim of the weather. But we wanted to recognize Mr. Andre Patterson, who was an employee of Ferndale Public Schools. On December 20th, about 8:30 at night, a young lady had taken her iPhone out. She was charging it in the gym at the high school. She observed somebody snatch her iPhone and start running out of the gym. She notified Andre Patterson. He began to chase the individual, at the same time pulled out his cellphone and called the police department. As he was running after this individual, he kept the dispatch updated as to where the individual was running, where he was running to. The suspect doubles back and came back onto school property just as the officers arrived. We apprehended the individual, recovered the iPhone. Mr. Patterson identified positively the suspect as the person he chased, and the victim identified him as the person who stole the phone. So the phone went back to the owner, and the bad guy went to jail. And Mr. Patterson, in our estimation, is deserving of a citizen's award. Hopefully, if he shows up later tonight, we can recognize him with a round of applause, but he really did step up, and we really appreciate it. And I know Andre is a really good guy, and he really helped us out.
Thanks. While you're here and you have the microphone, since we don't have our recipient, could you just maybe talk a little bit, educate our residents about how big of an issue iPhone and smartphone theft is, and maybe what folks should be thinking about in terms of that? It feels like it's more common all the time.
More common all the time. It also has its own nickname now. It's called apple picking, if we've heard that before.
I have not.
And many times, what's happened is that it's not just Apple phones, it's obviously all the electronic devices. The phenomenon is that many times, folks with cellphones that have their connect to the cloud and have the ability to listen to their, they either have their music or they can listen to the radio now on your iPhone. Many times, we're walking around to the street, and we have our earbuds in, not paying attention to our surroundings. Our recommendation is, number one, never leave your cellphone on a table, in a bar or a restaurant, any place else, and leave it unattended. They're very small, very easily concealed, easily susceptible to theft. Also, while you are walking or jogging, we also recommend that you have to be, keep a situational awareness of what's around you. A lot of times, you'll get into the fog with your music, and you won't be paying attention to someone coming up. And the other issue that we have is, a lot of times, folks will come up to people and say, hey, can I use your phone? They'll stop in the street, they'll stop while you're walking down the street, get out of a car, or they'll walk up to your car, and reverse of that, and ask you to use your phone. And generally, if you give them the phone, it's nice to be a good Samaritan, but that, we see that not only in our city, but the surrounding communities, we see time and time again, where they're not, they don't want to make a phone call, they might use your phone, and they're going to run away with it. So it is, but it's mostly common sense and situational awareness that will help you keep your $600 local gadget in your pocket.
Thanks, thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. All right. Yeah, and if Mr. Patterson comes, we'll certainly recognize him. The next presentation is Ferndale Public Schools, but I don't see anyone from our Ferndale Public Schools here. We're having some very extreme weather again tonight, and perhaps they were not able to make it. However, I do see that our county commissioner got the dog sled out and rode up Woodward to visit us. Why don't we substitute the schools with our county commissioner, Helene Zack?
Thank you. Happy winter, everybody, and Happy New Year. I want to tell you about something that happened last week. At our Board of Commissioners meeting, we honored the Citizens for Fair Ferndale, the Good Neighbor Project. And I was so proud, it was really a bad evening. And I think we had eight or nine people drive from Ferndale to be honored. And Greg Pollocka was one of them, and it was truly wonderful. And I couldn't have scripted it better, but this is something that I'd gotten approval to do months ago, and arranged to do it in December. And again, we were promoting good neighbors, civility, respect, you know, it was just very well timed. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And I was pleased to share this wonderful program with my commissioner friends, and I hope that they will take the pledges back to their communities and implement them there.
I appreciate you sharing that throughout the county. We're very proud of them here, but it was very nice of you to give them that kind of publicity and hopefully spread the project across the county. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you. It was my pleasure. I do want to remind people through the Community Home Improvement Department of Oakland County, we do a lot of good work. We give money for community development block grants, and it's used well here. And I do want to remind residents that there are loans with no interest for housing repair. You can do roofs, furnaces, there's an income requirement, but the good news is you can get up to $20,000, no interest, and you pay it back when the home is sold. So I was looking at the numbers, I sit on the Citizens Advisory Council, and our numbers in Ferndale are lower than they have been. So I just want to remind people about that. Great service, you can go to the Oakland County website under Community Home Improvement. I know we have information in the city, and it's a wonderful program for all of us. I also want to talk to you, it's not exactly what I want, we've been working on a bi-local idea for a while, and the program that was presented to us, this is the, hopefully, Phase One, is called OaklandBusinessConnect.com. And I'm encouraging all of our local businesses to sign up for this list exchange, so that you can be a registered local business. And also, we want to encourage people to start looking at this list exchange, so that when you're looking to buy things, that you will shop locally through the OaklandBusinessConnect.com. More information will be coming. We also accept-
It hasn't started yet.
It hasn't, it's just hot off the press.
Gotcha.
So want people to start to know about it.
Make sure our DEA and our Chamber of Commerce both are aware of that as well, so they can tell their members.
Absolutely. Oakland County Parks accepted another $20,000 grant for disabled veterans, and this is our second year of getting money, and examples of what we've done. We've made fishing more accessible, so that you can get out to piers, you know, benches, things like that. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I'm glad to receive money to help support disabled veterans and other disabled residents. We also have a new benefit that's starting. We do have a program in the county called Step Forward. It's actually state funding that people can use to pay either their mortgage, and again, it's income or taxes, up to $30,000. It is a federal and state program, and it's administered through our treasurer's office. So we have worked with certified housing counselors for that. But in addition, when people come to us with mortgage or tax issues, often it's just tip of a whole financial problem. So our treasurer, Forward Thinking, applied for our grant, and has received a grant and is working with another nonprofit, JVS, so that we have financial empowerment counselors. And they'll be sitting at the county, working with our residents who present with these mortgage or tax issues. And I did request to have ours at the South Oakland County office, which isn't very south, it's in Troy, but I hope to also have, that's a whole nother story, but I do hope to have financial empowerment counseling there in addition to the Pontiac location. And then there's another thing, SEMCAG is introducing a new, what they call the Successful Corridors Toolkit, and I don't know if you've received it, but I do want to encourage that, you know, as a tool and for all of us around here. So that's the latest and greatest. Any questions for me?
Very good. Any questions of the county commissioner?
Thank you.
Nope. Appreciate you coming, though. Good to see you. All right, I still don't see anyone from the schools, so I'll assume that we are done with presentations, and we'll move along to the next agenda item, which is Call the Audience. Call the Audience is your opportunity to speak for up to three minutes on any issue that's not on the agenda, because I'll give you an opportunity to speak on that when we get to that part of the agenda. Just come on up, give me your name and your address, if you're comfortable, if not, write it on the back, and three minutes to speak on whatever you'd like. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council this evening? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to start this with a positive. Dan Christ, last meeting, you shook hands outside and you wished me a Happy New Year. I thank you for that. Dan Martin came up last council meeting and said, it's good to see you here. I thank you for that.
Thanks.
Mayor Coulter, you said hi tonight. I thank you for that. As mentioned on November 25th of last year at this council, I met with April Lynch on November 20th. Initially, I requested that meeting on November 13th. On November 13th, April Lynch had stated to me, I don't know what your issue is, and I will not respond to you in City Council when you speak. On November 20th, when April Lynch and I met in her office, she had stated, my goal is to be transparent. She also stated, I want to fix issues the first time, so that I do not have to deal with them a second time. Again, April Lynch stated, I will not respond, nor will anyone else from the city respond to what I say at City Council. She has stated that she is more than willing to communicate through phone calls, emails, letters. In that meeting, this water bill was brought up, and I had just paid this water bill on November 20th, when I met with her. And my issue there was that the read dates were still outside of the service period. Granted, it was only three or four days, but I had requested that this be taken care of back on May the 8th of 2013. And Joe seemed to argue the point that the read date was inside of the service period, and it was not. I don't know why, I mean, like I had said to Ms. Lynch, this is just a speck of dust, but it's the attitude that when I request something, there's no solution. That's all tonight.
All right. Let me address your first point, just because I want to clarify. Call to Audience, which is what you're doing now, is your opportunity to speak for three minutes. We don't use this as a back and forth between council. That's, I think what she was referring to is, we're not going to have a discussion at this point in the agenda on those items, and that's what she meant by council won't be speaking to you directly. We'll answer questions of fact, you know, what's the phone number to call for DPW, we would say that. We don't use Call the Audience as a discussion between council and staff and the audience. And so I think that's what she was referring to by, we wouldn't speak directly at council to that. But as you know, April's always happy to talk on the phone or in person on the other issues. On the water bill issue, I'm not sure of the particulars there, but if you want to notify staff that you have a concern about how we're calculating it, we will get you a formal answer, I can promise you that.
We have multiple times.
Pardon me?
We've discussed this multiple times.
Multiple times, we've done that, okay.
Happy to talk to them again.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Pittsburgh, oh, you took that off too soon.
If you want to root for a football team, you obviously got to go someplace else, you know, because you can't be playing on the Lions. I mean, where else can you watch TV and get a Lions joke on Jeopardy?
Were they really?
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
It was the only team, the only original football team to never win a Super Bowl.
Well, we all know the answer to that, unfortunately, yeah.
I was sitting there watching, but anyways.
Good evening.
Couple of things, that's August 15, 50 Spencer. I got to thank the police department for the fine job they did over the holidays. They managed to persuade people on my street to get off the street in a snowstorm. They got this thing that they, you know, they fill out this piece of paper and they stick it to your car, you know? So when the snowstorm came around the second time, my street was like a ghost town, and the plows were able to get up and down it, back and forth, like they were supposed to, should be, like we all expect. Two, okay, reading about Detroit and the water bills, seeing how this guy brought it up, I don't know your name, but anyways, I really can't afford the $33 that we get charged on that bill, and they're talking about raising our rates. I've never, in all the years, of all this stuff that the suburbs have been doing to improve their systems, and that, never once heard Detroit ever improve theirs, or even make an attempt to improve theirs. And now they want to bill us suburbs, you know, if they get this thing going, and they, apparently they need to. I can't afford any more water bills, you know? I can't afford to pay another dollar on this stuff. I really can't. I made the comment before, you know, when the water rates were going up, and we were having all these problems with the meters, you know, and that, and my house looks like somebody hit it with double odd buck, because the guys couldn't put the new meters on to cover the old holes, and that. I'm dead serious about looking for a well drilling company, if they go up anymore. I just don't have that money. And I just got to wonder whether present city council, past city councils, I've never heard any of the city councils ever say that they've done some background checking, or even talked to the people in the city of Detroit about what they're going to do about making their systems better, to better supply the neighborhoods. I've never heard anything about that. So, you know, if Detroit decides to raise those water rates, and it gets passed on, it's going to be awfully tough on me, and it's going to be awfully tough on a lot of other people, and that, okay? I can't afford any more money. I can't afford to give it to the Water Department, okay? I just can't, I can't, you know, I just can't squeeze any more out of my pocketbook, and that. And Happy New Years to all of yous. Congratulations, Councilman Pollocka.
Thank you.
And you made a move there, Councilman Piana. Congratulations to your move. See you later.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing no one, I will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, did I miss something?
No, I was just looking at you.
Oh, look at me like I forgot something. The consent agenda, our items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled by council from the consent agenda. Let me read the consent agenda for you now. Item A is the approval of a minutes of the special and regular meetings held January 13, 2014. Item B is the adoption of a resolution strongly urging the state legislature to use the state budget surplus to restore funds to local governments and to fix Michigan's broken municipal finance system, as submitted by Councilmember Martin. Item C is the approval of a lease of a Ford 2014 E250 commercial cargo van for use in the fire marshal's unit to be charged to the motor pool fund. Item D is the approval to pay the Oakway and MABAS 3202 mutual aid membership invoice for a total of $5,000, as submitted by our fire chief. And E is the approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Moved by Martin, second by Pollocka. Is there discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Councilman Pollocka, I assume you approve of leasing a Ford vehicle?
Very much so.
Okay. All right, Cheryl Lennon, would you call the roll on the consent agenda, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A is a consideration of a six-month employment extension for four firefighters. April, are you going to introduce that item?
Thanks. As you know, we had a SAFER grant that expired at the end of last fiscal year, and we were trying, as we were working through the budget process last year, it was agreed upon to keep the four SAFER Grant firefighters on for this, for another six months, so we could explore some opportunity with Fire Authority. And we have been, actually, and we've been talking with a lot of detail with Hazel Park and moving forward within the Fire Authority with them. Those talks continue to move forward, and when talking to Chief Sullivan, we would like to extend them another six months during this budget year, to continue the discussion with Hazel Park on a Fire Authority. As you know, we'll start the budget process in March, that we can make that discussion or make a decision for next fiscal year, depending on some decisions that are made with the Fire Authority. But at this time, it would be, we would request that we keep them on for another six months. We do have, one firefighter has already left, he has taken new appointments, we're actually now, since I wrote this, we only have to, we will be holding three firefighters. We will hold off on hiring one more until we figure out what we're doing over the budget process. But what we hope to do is do mid-year adjustments, and if the current budget can't handle, the remainder of the money, we'll take that out of fund balance.
Any questions of council?
I just have one with not hiring the fourth individual that's left extended, and I know this is extending those additional positions. Chief, you're comfortable with, or through April, sorry, you're comfortable with the operational level with the three additional?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with this, too, and I guess I just want to say that, I just wanted to express my gratitude to City Manager April and Chief Sullivan on working with our partners in Hazel Park. I always tell people, because I get asked, why is this taking so long? Why are we extending this? And my general comment is, you can't make someone marry you. And so we are working really hard to make this marriage work, and it just takes longer than you think it will take. And so I'm very supportive of keeping on our firefighters for another six months. But I know that we have to stop at some point courting a city that's not willing to marry us. But I don't think that has come to pass yet.
No, not yet.
I'd also add my appreciation, but also my encouragement that we continue the discussion as long as Hazel Park is engaged in that.
Yes.
I think this is something that is smart for us to do, and that we need to do, and pursue it. And, you know, my hopes is we're able to bring this resolution within the six months, but I'm fully supportive of keeping these folks on for that six months during that time.
Since we're sort of getting into more comments and questions, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Sure. I move to approve a six-month extension of the four SAFER Grant firefighters scheduled for layoffs on December 30, 2013 through June 30 of 2014, with a cost allocation of approximately $186,143 to be taken from the general fund balance.
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Now, general comments, and seconded by, I'm sorry, Pollocka. Now, general comments, questions, thoughts on this issue.
I just echo Dan, it's the right policy for us, for Ferndale to create the Fire Authority, so.
I agree.
Keep working at it.
Thank you. So I guess on that question, and I don't want to put you on the spot, and I know these things are fluid, but what kind of timeframe do you think we're looking at with the city of Hazel Park? How are they moving forward in processing this information, and, not to hold you to this, because I know this is fluid, but how does that look?
They have a unique situation in Hazel Park, that their budget, they're at a new level of bare bones, and so they're really struggling with what millage that they can support, because they have a police-fire millage right now. So they're trying to figure out at their end what exactly, what their community can support, and we're working through that with them and helping them come up with some ideas and thoughts of that nature. I think the chief and I were talking, and it would be, we are hoping that by April, that we have an answer, because if not, we need to, we need to, we have to figure out as an organization how we're going to manage our fire service or the potential for our heavy override. So I'm hoping by April that we're going to have an idea of when we can move forward with putting it on the ballot and things of that nature. But if they need more time, as long as, again, as they remain engaged, we'll keep working through that as long as we can. But right now, I think they're really focused on their budget right now, so that we can come back and have conversations on millage rates.
Thank you. All right. Any last comments or questions? Cheryl Lennon, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to regular agenda B, consideration to renew the TIA membership, and who's going to introduce that item?
Lloyd.
Lloyd, will you introduce that for us? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The city uses the Traffic Improvement Association for traffic consulting. The annual membership due for 2014-15 is $5,700. The fees are paid out of our general major road fund, and the police, and the community and economic development, and also Public Works recommends approval. Tonight, in attendance, we have the executive director, Jim Santilli, and we hope to answer any questions that council may have.
Are there questions of fact of council?
Just to clarify, the charge and the expense of the annual fund and for the studies that they do, are there additional costs above the $5,700 we pay, or that covers all those studies?
No, there is no additional cost. And in the past, staff has reviewed the services that we receive annually from them, and found that if we were to go on the market and pay engineers for similar services, that would exceed our membership due.
Can you give us an explanation of exactly what is done? What does this organization do?
Right now, this coming year, from a Public Works perspective, we're looking at a number of challenges with our traffic signals. And so we have had some- Thank you, officer. Okay, thank you. He's got a gun, so. But the, you know, we're looking at our traffic signals, we're going to be evaluating them, and so having their expertise, you know, scheduled in at no additional cost, will help us decide what warrants are needed, whether or not we can possibly modify or remove some signals and save us a considerable cost. We're looking at a cost of $150,000 to $200,000 per- We're looking at a cost of $150,000 to $200,000 per intersection to upgrade our signal lights. And so, this coming year and next couple of years, we're going to be using those services for that. Now, the police also use them for crash analysis, traffic analysis to determine, you know, speeds on roads, whether or not it's by looking at the traffic patterns, you know, left turns, right turns, green arrows, and all of the traffic study information in order to make, you know, good decisions based upon engineering principles rather than just, you know, making a casual observance and trying to decide whether or not it's needed. Thank you.
I only wanted to add, from the police perspective, we have been utilizing TIA extensively in the last couple of years. A lot of it has to do with what Lloyd had mentioned in regards to the removal of several, or the evaluation of several intersections to remove lights and other warrants on other traffic control devices. They've also given assistance on traffic counts, re, or looking at the schools as to give us different ideas for traffic patterns. So from the police department's perspective, they are, we use them as much, if not more, than DPW does.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the city's 2014 community membership and the Traffic Improvement Association and a charge of the expense of $5,700 to the Major Streets Fund Membership Indues, account number 202-000-958.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollock. Any other questions, comments on this item?
I have some comments. I have always given this renewal of great scrutiny, particularly in the first two years of my seat on council. And I think, from my point of view, TIA has upped their game in terms of explaining the services that they provide since I started asking questions in 2010. And we definitely have a DPW director who can actually answer questions about the services that they use. So I'm very supportive of the TIA going forward, particularly because staff use these services. But I still have philosophical differences with TIA. In terms of planning, so.
I'm not a planner, so I don't, I don't know those as detailed as you. But I will say this, not only do we get sort of specific project services from TIA that are helpful, and I think more than make up for the $5,000 that we spend, but TIA's broader mission is to reduce the number of fatalities in Oakland County. And I think over the past couple of decades, you've done that dramatically. And Oakland County's rate of fatalities is now half of what the state of Michigan is. So even just keeping in mind beyond the specific projects that we use them for, they are achieving their overall mission, which is to reduce injuries and fatalities on the roadways in Oakland County. And so, I think it's a nonprofit organization. It does not make money on its services, which is one of the reasons that they can offer these services at the rates that they do. And so, I am supportive of our participation in TIA.
Well, I also want to remind council that I have voted for this before in the past.
Absolutely.
So I know that staff, staff really appreciate this service. And so, sometimes good value has to outweigh my own personal philosophical differences, so.
Other comments or questions? Sherlyn, you want to call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Lloyd. And thanks for coming here. We didn't have any specific questions for you tonight, but appreciate you coming out in the very cold weather tonight to be here with us tonight.
We appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is a consideration of ordinance amending the composition of the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. Sherlyn, is this, are you going to introduce this item?
Sure, and Dan, the attorney Chris can back me up.
Hot potato. Who wants to take this one tonight?
I'll certainly.
Oh, thank you, Dan.
This is mayor. There was an issue that arose with respect to the Employees Retirement Board of Trustees and the membership of the Board of Trustees. As currently configured, the board consists of three trustees, the mayor or a council member. And also the city manager by virtue of her office and the finance director by virtue of his or her office. The proposal, which was, which is before you this evening, would be to amend that ordinance to provide that the mayor served by virtue of your office and eliminates the finance director position. So it would still remain a three-member board, consisting of the mayor, a council member to be selected by enally, which was done at last meeting. The council member Martin was appointed through December 31st of 2015. And then the city manager would be the third member if council elects to make this amendment change.
I would just add, if I could, I currently chair this retirement board. And it's a closed system. It's fully funded, plus some. It's a very healthy fund balance and doing very well. So I, as a chair, don't have any concerns about not having a finance director person on the board, but we do require three. So it seems logical that we had you, the mayor.
So I got, I got drafted for that. This is fine. I also serve on the other fire pension board, and so I am familiar with the same issues. And so, it makes sense to me as well. So I have no objection to serving on this one as well. The pay is the same. Zero. Yeah. Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 1151, amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 7, Employees Retirement System, Section 2-111 of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Any other discussion? By the way, when I said the other one, we have a police and fire pension board, which this mayor serves on by virtue of our office. So very similar issues, similar boards. That's what I meant when I referred to the other board. Other questions, comments on this item?
No, I'll just add, in fact, to streamline the process, we're actually meeting jointly both boards this year because similar issues, similar management funds handle the transactions for them.
That's right. And tell them what time we're meeting.
7:00 AM.
I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
You're welcome.
Can I object? Wait. No. So Sherlyn, would you want to call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our last regular agenda item this evening is a consideration to amend council rules of procedure regarding meeting start time. If you recall, we put on notice, we had Dan, Chris, you should with us, that we had to give notice to change the, of one council meeting's time to change. So we gave notice of this motion last time, but we didn't actually make the motion last time.
That's correct, but the, if I could, what you did, there was a motion to put a proposed time for the changing meetings from the current 7:30 PM time to a 6:30 PM time. So that is the motion before you this evening.
So the motion before us this evening is, would be to change the meeting time until 6:30 PM, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. But that has not been moved. So is there, is there a motion from council on that item?
To move it from 6:30?
To adopt this motion to make it 6:30. Okay, so that, that motion dies for lack of support. I would entertain an alternate motion if somebody wanted to make such.
And your honor, again, given the rules of procedure, if council indicated it wished to consider another time, it would really be providing notice of that this evening. It would be acting on that change at the first meeting in February.
So it would be a motion to provide notice?
Correct.
Such, just like we did.
And so there would be a time identified in the motion? Correct.
Okay.
I would move that we provide notice to changing time for the council meeting to 7:00 PM.
Is that appropriate?
Is that all you have to say, Dan?
Yeah, I think that's...
Close enough? Is there support for that motion?
Support.
It's been moved by Martin and supported by Pollock to give notice at the next meeting to move our meeting times till 7:00 PM. Is there discussion on that motion?
Yes, I think I've been very clear. I didn't want to change the meeting time anyway. The evidence to me didn't suggest that there was conclusive tipping of one way or the other. And so, while the 7 o'clock is better than 6:30, I'm sticking to my original no vote. Just stick with my purpose, so just let you know.
I think for purposes of discussion, I certainly respect your opinion. I understand the concerns about 6:30, which is why I'm comfortable moving at 7:00 PM. And I think for purposes of moving forward and having discussions about this, I'd like to consider 7, put it to vote, and then we can decide from there if there's support for it or not.
I would just say, I am supportive of 7 o'clock. It does seem like the feedback we got that residents were open to making them a little earlier. So I appreciate council's flexibility in trying to find a middle ground and adopt something that might be acceptable to the majority of folks. But I want to remind residents that we will not be voting on this until the next meeting, which will be at 7:30, because we'll still be starting then. And if you have, if you have an opinion or want to express an opinion on that, I'd encourage you to come out at our next meeting and let us know what you think. Any other comments or discussion?
I just want to say that originally last week, when I made the suggestion of 6:30, it was based on the survey being the majority vote for 6:30. However, since that time, I talked to a number of residents and what I could, the conversation I could have with them was, is 6:30 the only time that you can make it? Or is it just the time you would like it? And a majority of the people said that 6:30 is nice to have, but they could make 7 or 7:30. And to me, the most important part of this is accessibility, us being accessible to the people. So if it remains 7:30, I'm fine with that. If it's changed to 7 o'clock, I'm also fine with that. But ultimately, I feel it's the people who need to be, we need to be accessible to the people, so.
All right, Sherlyn, we have a motion made by Martin, supported by Pollock, to give notice at the next meeting to move the meeting time to 7:00 PM. Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please? Is that okay, Dan?
It is, your honor. It will be an agenda item on your...
An agenda item on the next meet, yes.
First meeting of February.
That's correct.
Councilmembers Piana? No. Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. That concludes our regular agenda this evening. Next item of business would be the call to council. Police chief, anything else from the police department for the good of the community this evening?
I do, your honor. Although you will probably hear this in a more formal setting, hopefully at the next meeting. But I did want to make everybody aware of the just outstanding job and the outstanding cooperation that we had in the recent homicide investigation we had earlier this month. The individuals, we'll name them with the words as time goes forward. But I did want to recognize all the federal agencies and local agencies that gave us a hand, that had a very quick resolution to that investigation and arrest. And the FBI, the INS, Customs, Royal Police Department, Hazel Park Police Department, Oak Park Police Department, Detroit Police Department, without them, or US Marshal Service as well, and the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, without all of those folks working together, I mean, that's how it, that's how it's supposed to work. That's how it did work, and we had a very good result. That being said, we would also like to caution folks, people that are panhandling on the street, most of the time, these are folks that are down on their luck. There's not much to be afraid of. They're just folks that you can, if you want to give them a hand, that's one thing. But don't engage them in your motor vehicle. Don't bring them home. Don't, just on the off chance that we have a situation like this again. Not telling folks not to help people in need, it's just that you have to be, just like the iPhone thing. You have to be very conscious of what the, what some folks can do to you.
And chief, you recognized a lot of agencies, but, you know, fortunately, we don't have a lot of homicides in Ferndale. But you guys closed this in about 24 hours, and your department did outstanding work, and we appreciate it.
And thank you for that, but this was even interdepartmentally. There's always a little bit of healthy competition between the patrol division and the detective division. And in a case like this, in years past, it was always the area of responsibility of the detectives to solve something like this. We have more embraced more of a, you know, everybody can stick their finger in if they can. And the shout-out really goes to the patrol division on this. The vehicle was located by a couple of officers. The same few officers were the ones that located the suspect hours and hours later. So it was, the patrol division really gets the, everybody had their role, but patrol really stepped up to the plate on this one. It was really cool.
Great job. Great job. Thank you. Jenny, anything from the human resources department this evening?
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a really quick update on our employer-sponsored health and wellness clinic. We are currently in the process of receiving bids for the services, the management company, that would potentially run this clinic for us. Those are due to Cornerstone the end of January. And so, we'll be reviewing those. We're also working with the other communities within that project to develop an inter-local agreement amongst each other as to how that would work, should we decide to go forward. So we'll be looking to bring something to council, probably February, March-ish, with a recommendation as far as whether we're going to move forward or not, or make the recommendation to move forward with that or not.
Good. Thanks for the update. Any questions for Jenny?
Counsel?
Yeah. Okay, good. Well, Chief Sullivan, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Mr. Mayor and council, with the cold weather upon us, I'd like to tell everyone to make sure they bundle up when they're outside and that. But we are more worried about auxiliary heating. Bringing kerosene heaters and that into the home is a very dangerous thing, carbon monoxide buildup. If it's not meant for an inside heater, it should not be brought in. Don't open the door of your oven and run your oven at 500 degrees. That also causes carbon monoxide and other problems. It's just bad and cold. If you need assistance, you can always call the fire department. We can help you out with some things, because we'd rather be preventative than respond to a late-night fire where people are seriously injured or killed. So it's going to be bitter cold, and pipes could break and that. Again, if you need help there, the firemen know how to shut off your water. The DPW also can shut it off at the curb, but with the ground the way it is, there's not going to be a lot of curb shutting off going on. So if you need help, give us a call. Please don't try and handle it yourself. We don't want people electrocuted or burnt or injured severely by these issues, so stay warm.
While you're here, because it came up recently, the mayor of Royal Oaks home was severely damaged by fire. You've probably heard about that, and that was from dryer issues. Why don't you just use this opportunity to remind our residents what they should do about their dryers?
Well, one, it's code to have a solid metal pipe for your dryer, but everyone does it themselves. So do-it-yourself home people like to get the flexible type of pipe, and that stuff just doesn't hold up well. It also causes a large lint buildup. All of pipe going out of the dryer is going to have lint buildup. You need to clean them regularly, as well as the dryer screen. Just cleaning the dryer screen does not clean the back pipe going out. And the heat is enough that eventually that'll, that'll catch on fire. And the more lint goes to dust form, it spreads the fire rapidly through your basement. If the pipe comes undone, and you've been letting the lint blow all over the place, and your whole basement's covered with this stuff, it's, it almost creates a flash fire. So just regular maintenance and cleaning of your dryer. And if you can't do that, call someone who can. If you need help or advice, we can come over, take a look, and tell you what needs to be done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks. Lloyd, anything else from DPW this evening?
Through the chair, may I ask you a question?
Of course.
We authorized the expended sheriff to replace the printer, I think it was last council session. Has that been done yet, or?
Yes, and the staff has received training, and they're coming up to speed on the techniques.
Okay, great, because I know there's a couple of signs. We were waiting for the printer port, so. Thank you very much.
And Lloyd, just to be clear, even though it's really cold out, and we did get a little snow, we're not under a snow emergency now and not anticipating one over the next couple of days?
Not the next couple of days. We're actually, the weather predicts a little bit of sunshine.
I do have a follow-up question.
Please.
So after we had the mini snowmelt before the more snow came, potholes are showing their ugly heads. And should people just call you if they notice something on their side streets?
Please.
Okay.
We'll have a crew out right now, because we...
Yeah, if you don't mind.
The more snow than we predicted, the weather predicted over the weekend, they have been going out. And even though we did not declare a snow emergency, they have been going out into the neighborhoods and touching up areas that need some attention. But yeah, you know, we, we will continue to do that.
you know, we, we will continue to do that, and just to let council know too, we have reached our, our maximum use on salt, and so that may change our, as we go forward, depending upon market availability, we always budget 20% more, and it's written into our contract, you know, that we can go exceed, you know, up, up to 20%, which we're doing it, you know, we're doing currently, we're receiving our final loads, so, we'll know, we're, we're waiting for an update from our salt supplier, but there certainly will be some sort of an increase, but more important is availability.
That's what I was going to ask you, is, obviously, there's going to be a cost associated, but is, is salt even available?
Right, well, we'll know shortly, hopefully this week.
It's got to be in high demand.
Are there alternatives?
Sand, brine, you know, which we also use at the, at the yard, but not as effective, but certainly though, with the cold temperatures we've had the last three weeks, salt is not as effective, you know, as it is once it reaches above, certainly above 20 degrees, so.
Thank you, thanks, Lloyd. Joe, anything from the CIO area this evening?
Yeah, I'm happy to announce that we will be getting the 2014 parking permit program for the downtown area. To date, we've only been selling temporary passes, temporary monthly passes through January 2014, because we were rebranding the, the new parking pass program. New additions to the program this year, we will be looking to collect general applicant information, we've never collected data before, so general contact information, business number, primary email, phone number information, that way we can be more proactive about programming communications in the future. Residents will also, or applicants rather, will also receive a parking brochure, informational brochure, and a detailed parking permit map for all the locations where parking permit application, or parking permits are applicable in the downtown area, that's also a new development.
If I may, through.
Yeah.
The chair. My understanding is the permits, parking permits are not discounted if you buy them quarterly or yearly, correct?
There's no discount for the year 2014.
Pardon?
Not, not for the current year, for 2014.
Okay.
Good, thanks, Joe, appreciate it. Sherilyn, anything from the clerk's office?
I'm just going to remind residents again that it's time to renew your dog licenses, Oakland County will be conducting their dog census again this year, so get your dog licenses soon to avoid fines.
Very good. April from the city manager's office.
I have a couple of things, um, the Kulik Center will remain open tomorrow and Wednesday from 10 to 7:30 PM as a warming center for those that need some relief from the heat, and we thank the Kulik Center staff for maybe being able to man that. I just want to let the public know that on February 5th, from 5:30 to 9:30 at the Kulik Center, we will be holding a goal-setting session with city council to review the current goals that we have, and see if there's any additions or changes that we would like to make. And now, again, that will be February 5th, from 5:30 to 9:30 at the Kulik Center. That's all I have today.
Very good. Dan, Chris, anything else from the legal wing?
Hopefully, Royal Township has asked the city of Ferndale to be its public safety answering point, or its 911 system, there should be, for your agenda at your next meeting, an agreement for your consideration on that issue.
Thank you. Very good. Councilman Martin?
Yeah, we are into the Bud Light Ferndale.
Yes, we are.
The Blues and Music Festival, it started off, despite the cold weather, with a great turnout this past weekend. It runs through this next weekend, which includes the rib tent and the parking lot between the library and Dino's Lounge, that occurs on February 1st, it's a fantastic time, all proceeds go to Ferndale Youth Assistance and Michigan AIDS Coalition, which are two really strong local charities, so I highly encourage you to participate, come on out. If you go to the website, which is www.ferndalebluesfestival.org, you can see the list of bands and musicians that are playing through this weekend, and despite the cold, come on out, because it's a great time, you can stay warm, enjoy some fantastic music, and support great local causes, so, that's it, thank you. Oh, other than, I just want to, again, a continual shout-out to DPW, this week, again, I heard that Woodward was horrible until I got to Ferndale, and then it got horrible again when I got out of Ferndale, so, thank you, guys, very much.
They're conserving salt, apparently.
Yeah, well.
No, very true. Councilman Pollocka?
Uh, yes, I just want to give a shout-out to DPW as well, but this is in regards to the remote monitoring system for the water, I know a number of people are very questionable about that system, but my understanding is over the last month, there's been about 15 calls in vacant homes where the system recognized, there was a spike in water use, and your folks were able to get out there, shut the water off, otherwise, these homes would have flooded terribly, so.
Yes, and not only does it, you know, allow the resident to save on that water usage, but it also prevents property damage, you know, and so that's, that's, the system, each morning, we check for alerts, which would be unusual extreme flow, and we have received dozens, and so we respond, knock on doors, police department has helped us, and fire department as well, and so, you know, it's, it's a real benefit with the new system.
Thank you. And the only other thing I want to remind people is I'm still taking applications, we are still taking applications, for members for the Parks and Rec Committee, there's still several positions open, and if you have a passion for the parks, want to see some great changes, and you have a couple of hours a month to spare, we would love to have you on that committee.
I know someone for you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, councilman, Councilwoman Piana?
Um, I read a really sad article on the Free in the Detroit News, I think it was this morning or yesterday, and with the, the deep freeze that we're having and the prolonged nature of it, a lot of folks who are low-income individuals are having a hard time paying their utility bills, and, and so therefore, after time, their heating gets turned off, and this is a terrible time to have your heat turned off, and so I wanted to remind folks, there is a, a program out there called THA, the Heat and Warmth Fund, and this is a nonprofit that helps pay utility bills for usually the elderly, unemployed, underemployed, and disabled individuals who have found themselves in an energy crisis, and so there's a number you can call, and it's 1-800-866-8429, or you can go to thafund.org, www.thafund.org, and you can talk to your utility provider about coming up with a payment plan. It is better to come up with a payment plan if you can't pay your full payment every month in order to not have your heat turned off. And then I wanted to say, on Martin Luther King Day, councilmember Martin and councilmember Pollocka and I attended the annual goal-setting for the Downtown Development Authority, I thought it was a productive event, but there were some key things that were noted by the volunteers, and it, they really want the DDA to focus on activities that it can do really well, so narrow its focus and do things really well, rather than being spread really thin and trying to do too much, and I think that's where the focus of, that's what I heard, the focus of the volunteers are going to be trying to do on the, the committees going forward. And I know the DDA, or the city is going through its mini-goal setting, and I think there's opportunity to strengthen some downtown goals in the cities to help guide and provide some expectations for the DDA going forward. Other than that, I had a good time. Ford's the end.
Very good. Just a couple other things related to the weather, it is extremely cold, I'm glad that we're going to be doing the warming shelter again, just keep an eye on your neighbors, look after each other, if they are in, you know, need of, of heat assistance or a place to be warm, just know that there are opportunities out there, and if you're not sure what they are, call city hall, and we can direct you to how to get folks help, it, it's going to be a challenging next couple of days for folks, so let's, you know, keep an eye on each other. But spring is around the corner, and I was reminded of that because several of us met with the beautification committee last week, and that was really nice, and that, this is a, a group of folks who is best known for doing the beautification awards at council, but they, they also have a lot of other interests, including master gardening and arbors, trees, beautifying urban areas, and this is sort of a, a group that's getting a new kind of mission and, and energy to it, and if you want to be involved in the Ferndale Beautification Committee, I know that they would also be open to folks who have an interest in that sort of stuff, you can go to our website and get the application, but check out the Ferndale Beautification Committee, because spring will be here soon, and they will be a big part of making Ferndale look beautiful. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.